...Lunenburg Select Board, today is Tuesday, November 4th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with announcements, and I have a couple. First is just a reminder that the Lions Club hosts their Pancake Breakfast at the Adult Activity Center on the second Wednesday of every month. So November's Pancake Breakfast will be Wednesday, November 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The Eagle House Supporters is going to be hosting a Christmas Festival of Trees on Friday, November 21st, from 9:00 to 5:00, and then again the next day, on Saturday, November 22nd, from 9:00 to 1:00. The custom-designed Christmas trees that were done for their fundraiser will be on display, and they're also going to be holding a bake sale, a raffle, and hosting a visit from Santa Claus as well. And finally, as many of you know, SNAP benefits are no longer being dispersed as part of the ongoing federal government shutdown. I would like to encourage residents who are able to consider supporting the Lunenburg Community Food Pantry, which plays a vital role in assisting those in need in our community. If you are able to do so, and you would like to learn how, you can donate or volunteer, you can visit their website at lunenburgfoodpantry.org. All right, public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
No.
Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Scollimbrini, come on up.
Do I need to state where I live?
You need to say your name and your address, and then you will have three minutes.
I'm Tony Scollimbrini, I live at Five Valley Road. I come here tonight to discuss kind of the consequences of the vote that was taken regarding the merger of the Historic Commission and the APDC. That issue, in the real meaning of life, a merger, what the APDC does, what the APD is, is, it's kind of important, but in the real meaning of life, it's really not a significant issue for the town. What I think is very important, given how much this town relies on volunteers, is how the vote went down and what the consequences of that vote were. And I have a couple of questions that I want to propose to you, the members of the Select Board, the majority, that voted to withhold the warrant from the special town meeting. And the first question that I want you to consider is, you appointed a board, you appointed a commission, you've asked volunteers to be engaged, and I ask that you reflect on how your vote impacted those volunteers who have been doing their volunteer work for a year and a half on that particular subject. The second question that I want you to consider, the majority members who voted to withhold the warrant from town meeting, the second issue that I want you to consider was, how did your vote affect civil discourse among citizens? How did that vote impact the people who were engaged in the merger option, as well as those who attacked the merger option? So I really think that, you know, those are serious questions that have a serious impact on whether you can bring good volunteers to the table. And if the town is going to rely on having good volunteers, I think those questions need some deliberation, and I think they need to be addressed. The last thing I wanted to bring forward to you was, and I gave you a heads-up, I think I sent you all an email that said I was going to bring this issue forward, about reimbursement for public meeting or public request information. You know, as I mentioned to the town manager, as a federal employee, I constantly dealt with FOIA requests, Freedom of Information Act requests. It's part of my job. I got paid to do that, and I did it because it was in my job description, and, you know, we did calculate what it costs to get a response back to someone who had asked for information under the Freedom of Information Act. But when a volunteer is asked to do that work, and told that the volunteers can't be compensated, that's a policy that needs to be looked at. And I think that, once again, if some citizen's going to say, "I want to volunteer to do work," then that's outside the scope of what they volunteered for, and to a large extent, the information that's being requested is public information. Now, they can watch town, they can watch meetings, they can read meeting minutes, they can gather that information mostly through a public review of documents on their own part. So if the town doesn't have a policy, and according to Mass Law, you can request volunteers to be reimbursed as part of the response to a public information request. If the town doesn't have that policy, it should, because what I think it will do, once again, it won't waste good volunteer time, you know, because if you've been asked to do something, that you could then be compensated for that. And then the second issue is, I think it would create an environment where one citizen can talk to another citizen in a civil discourse. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Scollimbrini. Are there any other public comments from the public this evening? All right, not seeing any, so we will move on. And first tonight, we have a presentation from the Lunenburg Snowriders. They are offering a gift to the police and fire departments of trail maintenance equipment. We don't actually have to vote on this because of our new acceptance of gift policy, it's under $500, but there is a presentation, and I'm going to pass it over to you guys now.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Mel Bertram, I reside at 312 Townsendaba Road. I'm the president of the Lunenburg Snowriders. That and $3 still doesn't get me a cup of coffee, but it is at least something I can put on my email signature. So interestingly enough, do you have the presentation up?
Yep.
It's just not showing on that screen, but...
It's okay, I can see it here.
There it is.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Cool. So interestingly enough, the Lunenburg Snowriders were incorporated, actually, back in 1969, when Russ Harvey, Mr. Kimball from Kimball Orchard, Al Sozik, and so Paul Anderson, some of these old timers in town, put together the club. It went dormant for a long time, and I picked it up sometime around 2000, and been running the club 2000. So we're a family-oriented club, right? So what we want to do is try to bring, you know, legitimate snowmobiling as a family event to the state of Massachusetts. And in such, we are a club that's associated with the Snowmobile Association of Massachusetts. They're our parent club, they're the ones we get our insurance from, and a part of the larger organization. So we maintain trails between Lunenburg, Townsend, and Ashby. And, you know, as most people realize, that our winters aren't what they used to be. We used to count on 10 weeks of grooming. You know, that meant we had 10 good, solid weeks of snowmobiling. In the past five years, I'd be surprised if we had a total of 10 weeks, right? But the club is still going strong, and the reason for that is, the trails that we do and the work that we do is used year-round. So, you know, we're going to step through some of the things that we've done here as part of the club, but some of the projects off the top of my mind are, the parking lot down at the Lane property, that was done by volunteers and grant work by the Snowriders. The bridge, for those of you who go out to the Lane property, and that nice bridge that crosses the Malthus, we did that bridge through a grant. If you've ever walked through the Cowdery Lot in town, nearly every one of the bridges in that property was either created, maintained, or rebuilt by the Lunenburg Snowriders. And so, you know, I want to appeal to my friends and neighbors, not everyone appreciates the smell of two-stroke snowmobiles and that sound of that machine, "brat," we call it, right? But I would ask that you would tolerate us in this very short season we have now. Now, one of my slides here, if we could bring it up, is about grants. So if we could bring the spreadsheet up, and we'll come back to that trail one here, the next slide, please.
Yeah, it's up. It's up.
So if you look at this, over the past 15 years, in total, we have brought into the community over $200,000 in RTP grants. RTP grants, by the way, recreational trail program administered by the state, this is federal money that comes from the federal gas tax. So this is money that when we buy a gallon of gas for our snowmobiles, it pays into the system, and we get it back. You'll also see, this is what does a lot of the rail trails, like the Newt Quanico Rail Trail, that's all RTP money. Anyway, all of these grants have awarded us some particular piece of equipment. We have a couple of Kubota's, a Scandic, some other equipment, but more importantly, is they're 80/20 grants, and so 20% of that grant money is volunteer give-back. So that part where it says $60,000, if you divide that by, you know, 30, that's the approximate average rate that we had been getting, that's over 2,000 man-hours that we put into the community just on the grants. That doesn't include just our daily, you know, weekly, monthly maintenance out in the trails. So we do a lot for the community. And it's one of the things that we like to do, is we like to give back to the communities that we ride in, right? Because again, we understand that, you know, it's not always everyone's bad. You know, a lot of the people enjoy it, because we get out there, we pack the trails down, fat tire bikes love us, hikers love us, some of the cross-country skiers might want to kill us, but you know, overall, we get along. So in the effort of giving back, what we have done over the past is we've given, you know, I want to say, we thought it was two years ago, but it must have been closer to 10, we gave the town of Lunenburg a dry survival suit, town of Ashby a dry survival suit for ice rescue, right? And the town of, I'm sorry, that was Townsend, and Ashby actually asked us for an EMT backpack, right? Because they don't have big water bodies in Ashby, but they have a lot of trails, and so they were able, we were able to provide that for rescue. So tonight, you know, we facilitated with one of the former police administrative personnel, and we understand that the Lunenburg Police and the Lunenburg Fire have used for portable chainsaws. So what actually spurred this is, if you recall, back in the spring, there was a missing child out in one of the pieces of public property, and the police commented that, boy, that would be nice to have a small portable chainsaw that they could put on the ATV so they could get out there in the trails. So here we are, just in time for Christmas, and we have donated a chainsaw. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention my Vice President, Eric Brown from Ashby, my wife Paula, who most of you probably know, who was nice enough to put this slide deck together for me tonight, and Chief Sully is here, as Chief Thibodeau is away. So Chief Sully, if you would, you know, accept this small token of our appreciation of all of the hard work that's been done, and hi, Chris, now Lunenburg, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Definitely get put to good use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, team, well, thank you very much. I'm just sorry it took more time than I promised, but, any questions?
Did you want me to hop back to this trail map for a moment?
Oh, sure, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So this is a map of the snowmobile trails in Lunenburg, Townsend, and Ashby, and it's kind of nice. The trail actually goes right through my yard, and so you can go all the way from Shirley Reservoir, across Shirley Reservoir, through Flat Hill Orchard, across Hickory Hills Lake, through Hickory Woods, into Townsend, into Pearl Hill, through Pearl Hill, all the way up to Willard Brook, and do a nice loop in Willard Brook and come back. It's a great way to spend an afternoon on the snowmobile, or, you know, two or three days if you want to snowshoe it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, do you, there's some more slides, do you want to keep going through it, or...
Well, I don't want to take any more of your time.
It's okay, you can if you want to.
I think, if we want to bring them up, the, you know, we talked, we talked about the volunteers, we talked about the financial grants. There are some photos here of us, of some of the work we did on the Lane property, another property. Now, I want you to take special note on the bridge on the top-left corner. So this bridge is, by design, not wide enough for a snowmobile. So this is a hiking bridge and/or a biking bridge, and, you know, we build these anyway, even though we're not utilizing them. And one that we don't have a picture of, and I wish we did, it's actually called Mutiny Bridge. And you might say, why do you have a bridge called Mutiny Bridge? Because my wife and Peter Sharptier, God rest his soul, I asked them to tear apart the bridge and build a new one, and they were like, this bridge is perfectly fine, why are we tearing it down? And they did not want to do that, but we convinced them it needed to be done. So, thank you very much.
One more slide, want to just put this one up? Yep.
One more?
Yep.
Giving back.
This is us just giving back, so this is when we give the presentation, though.
All right.
Well, hold on.
Talk about the food banks and Salvation.
The what?
The food banks and Salvation.
Oh, that's right, yeah. You know, in these times of turbulence with our federal government, you know, as you stated, it's very important that we do what we can to help our neighbors. We host the Toys for Tots every year, and we also do food drives, like we just, we have a big Halloween bash, and one of the things is, for admission, you need to bring a non-perishable gift, so it's part of our mantra to give back to the community. All right, I'm done for good this time.
All right.
Thank you all.
Well, I want to thank you guys, of course, for the gift, but also for all the work that you do. I'm glad that you guys put together this presentation, because I didn't realize that you guys do so much philanthropy. Of course, there's the trail maintenance, which I appreciate, since I go to the trails a lot, and the bridges are great, but, you know, like you mentioned, the food pantry and the Salvation Army, so thank you for all the work that you guys do for the community.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mom? Call Logan.
Up next, appointments, ratifications, and resignations. First one is ratify the town manager's appointment of Jaclyn Tebow as Assistant Town Accountant.
Yes, so Jackie Tebow does not have any municipal experience, but she has many years of accounting and customer service experience. In her interview process, she exhibited the qualities of a quick learner, and somebody that, who was interested in creating efficiencies, so she will be joining us as Assistant Town Accountant starting tomorrow, if ratified.
All right, great. Any questions? All right, I will move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Jaclyn Tebow as Assistant Town Accountant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And the next is Deborah Crowe as Administrative Assistant of the Building Department.
Yes, so Deborah has a paralegal background, so we believe that she'll be a good fit to understand the regulations and permitting that go with the zoning board work and the building permitting work, and so she also has a pretty good customer service background, and she will be joining us if ratified on the 17th.
All right, any questions on this one? I will move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Deborah Crowley as Administrative Assistant of the Building Department.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And Lee Bain as Administrative Assistant of Planning.
Yes, so Ms. Bain is currently working with Mastot, so while she does have, not have municipal experience directly, she does have experience working with communities, she has a strong customer service background, and has some technical drafting capabilities that she picked up while working in the banking industry, and if ratified, she will be joining us in the Planning Department starting tomorrow.
Great. Any questions on this one? I will move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Lee Bain as Administrative Assistant of Planning.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And up next, we just want to acknowledge the resignation of James McWigan, a van driver for the Council on Aging. He's also a member of the Council on Aging, so I want to thank him for the work that he did as a van driver as well, for the Meals on Wheels. Okay, town manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first update is to update on the Finance Department transition. The transition of the Finance Department continues to be more complex than originally anticipated. As previously reported, we are transitioning the three positions of Finance Director, Payroll and Benefits Coordinator, and Assistant Accountant. We have already brought in external consulting services to stabilize our core functions, but the volume of issues that we are encountering requires attention that is larger than was anticipated and will take time to work through. As we are working to close out FY25, we are identifying and correcting issues that need to be addressed. However, based on our current status, we are now working to put together some additional contracted support service to get us through this transitional period. It's important to note that I am not indicating that the town is facing a financial crisis, but we are facing a substantial amount of cleanup and catch-up work. In addition, as we are starting to onboard and train new hires, we remain cognizant that these hires come at a time in the department with significant flux. So this is, we just talked about bringing on an Assistant Town Accountant, they'll be starting tomorrow in a department that's in transition, so that is, that's a little bit extra there. Working through these issues and the transition will have a financial impact and an operational, more significantly, an operational impact to the town over the coming months. It is likely that this full transition will take more than a year. To conclude, I will continue to update the board and the public through this type of forum as appropriate, but the impact is substantial. I just want to really flag that, the impact to the operations here is substantial with this transition. Okay. The tax classification hearing has, I think, last time I said that it had tentatively been scheduled for November 25th and off-cycle meeting, that is official now, so there is an off-cycle Select Board meeting on November 25th. The assessors have been diligently preparing for this hearing by submitting the state's sales data, the property values by class, and the new growth report are being submitted tomorrow morning, once signed. Actual new growth, over the estimated new growth of 400,000, is approximately $180,000. I have heard that misreported in other boards that being over $1 million, it's $180,000 approximately. As a reminder, new growth is the dollar increase in the levy limit that reflects the additional tax revenue generated by new construction, renovations, or other increases in the property tax base. So this does not mean, if you're replacing your roof with a like roof and you're updating it, that's not new growth. If you are adding on a deck, if you are adding in addition, that is new growth. All right, so that will be November 25th, tax classification hearing. The public tends to tune into the tax classification hearing as a reminder, the Select Board does not set the tax rate. The Select Board's determination at the tax classification is to determine the split between residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property, so whether there's one rate for everybody, or we're splitting the rate differently between residence and commercial-industrial. All right, Capital Planning Committee is starting to meet in earnest to consider requests for FY27 Capital Plan and beyond. This past week, they heard from the police and school departments. If you did not get a chance to tune in and are interested, that video should be up, and tomorrow evening they will be hearing from the Fire Department and DPW. As of October 29th, the DPW employees are now, are not, I wrote "not," are now officially represented by Teamsters Local 170 for the purposes of collective bargaining. So they have been through quite a process to get recognized, and that has come to a conclusion, so I would anticipate that we'll be hearing from the Teamsters shortly. Project updates on the Flat Hill Bridge replacement project. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation has agreed to extend the $600,000 small bridge grant through December 31st, 2027, so we will not lose that money. The order for conditions for the project require the work to be completed between October and March, therefore, work will not begin until October 2026, and will not likely be completed until June 2027. So that's that long date. As we proceed with next steps, I will report as appropriate. Town Hall weather vane, I previously reported that the replica weather vane for the town hall had been heading to, was going to be heading to a woodshop in Maine for reproduction to be crafted, that is looking like it's going to be difficult in scheduling, so our own Facilities Director is going to be making the approximation himself. So he's quite talented craftsman, so he knows that we're going to be scrutinizing that for sure. And the town hall, or the town building access control project remains ongoing. So we have one new recruitment, and that's Library Assistant at 19 hours per week, and that's due to a promotion. So the positions that remain open are the Payroll and Benefits position at 36 hours per week, Dietary Aid at 9 hours per week, intermittent heavy equipment operator, Land Use Director at 40 hours per week, and Recreation Director at 19 hours per week. I had put out an offer on the Land Use Director to a very strong candidate, and he's not able to take the position at this time as full-time, so unfortunately. So I'm just flagging this because, while I'm talking tonight about the deficiencies in the Finance Department and that organization, we have some pretty significant organizational weaknesses in other areas, that as we bring on, build it, as we bring on an admin to the planner, as we bring on admins, and there's not the staff there, that makes the success of those people in those roles all the more difficult, so we're cognizant of that, but these staffing challenges are starting to critically impact the operation. Let's see. And the board and committee vacancies remain the same, although we do have the Board of Assessors candidate, and I think that they're going to be looking to schedule a off-cycle, off-Tuesday meeting. They do not have Tuesday availability for a joint meeting for appointment, so I expect that request was going to come from the Board of Assessors any day now for that off-cycle meeting. And that is my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right.
No questions, but I appreciate all of your efforts, and I know that this is challenging, and our organization is facing some challenges, so I appreciate all of your efforts and your work to keep the ship afloat.
We're going to do our darndest to keep her afloat, and so, you know, to that, I just want to say that there's going to probably be some bumps and bruises along the way, and I just hope that people are understanding, as we go forward, of the challenges that are going to be long and ongoing.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. So a first and the only item under new business is consider issuing to the Governor and the Legislative Delegation a letter regarding FY27 school funding. So this is part of the broader and ongoing advocacy efforts to shape the next budget, so I'm just going to read through the letter here, and then we can discuss. "To the Legislative Delegation of the Town of Lunenburg, we the undersigned write to you on behalf of the thousands of students, educators, and community members who we collectively represent. We are writing to demand decisive state action in the FY2027 budget, using available fair share surplus funds to address the fiscal crisis facing our public school districts. Is increasingly clear that public schools across our state are facing significant fiscal challenges caused by severe flaws in our school funding policies that are rapidly undermining our students' constitutional right to a high-quality and fully-funded public education. Funding from all sources has not kept pace with growing demands for programs, services, and staffing to adequately meet students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. Federal ESAR funds may have spent, and, oops, federal ESAR funds may have been spent, and actions in Washington threaten our budgets. Proposition 2.5 has stalled many communities' ability to raise revenues locally. State aid under Chapter 70, while increasing thanks to the Student Opportunity Act, has proven inadequate for a majority of school districts for a variety of structural reasons. The result has brought devastating cuts to programs and staff in touching classrooms throughout Massachusetts. This must be addressed. We cannot accept the situation as an unavoidable reality that our students, educators, and local communities must navigate on their own, even in light of a difficult fiscal environment. Given the Commonwealth's proud tradition of supporting public education and an understanding of solutions that can begin to address the fiscal challenges facing our schools, we believe that you can take steps at the state level to solve this crisis. It is essential that you act with urgency and in ways that deliver resources to school districts of..." districts of all types, from gateway cities and minimum-eight communities to rural and regional schools. Specifically, we urge you to focus on advancing the following priorities that would provide relief to the school districts we collectively represent. One, strengthening the special education circuit breaker program. Two, fixing the Chapter 70 inflation cap. Three, fully reimbursing regional and non-regional school districts for student transportation costs. Four, significantly increasing rural school aid. Five, further mitigating the financial impact of charter schools on traditional public schools. And six, making targeted investments in the staffing and programs needed to best support student mental health. While addressing these issues would not solve the entirety of the fiscal challenges in public education, doing so would bring urgently needed resources to Massachusetts districts. We are counting on you to take meaningful steps in the coming months to deliver the funds that we need to succeed, and that adequately reflect the Commonwealth's historical commitment to public education. Thank you for your consideration." So, this is part of an effort that the Massachusetts Teachers Association is doing, so that's where a lot of this is coming from. So, we would be signing on to a letter that they're getting, people signing on from across the entire state. But since we're considering signing on as the entire board, we would just essentially send the letter ourselves. So, there's a lot of overlap in the content of the letter that they're requesting that we sign on to, and this one here.
So, it would be one or the other, not both? I just don't really know how that works. I'm assuming we all got an email with a request to send that letter?
We did, yeah. So, the form, the way that they're like actually collecting signatories is a little strange, so we could all individually do it, but there was no real good way to get like us as a body onto it. So, it just, I think it would be stronger, and I agree with this approach, that sending the letter kind of like on our own would just be better.
On our own meaning as the board?
Yes.
Yeah, we've done this.
We have.
Many times.
Yep. And a lot of people have already signed on to this as well, so, you know, the advocacy is certainly working, and hopefully it makes a difference. I think it has so far, so hopefully it can continue to make a difference.
So, a couple comments.
Sure.
Is it, do we have to vote on this tonight, or could we have?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Because it, you know, I kind of, you know, back when I would watch these meetings, I would kind of scoff at these letters, because, I mean, it's certainly something we're not advising them, anything that they don't know. And we're certainly not telling them anything that we also haven't already told them. I mean, I see there's no harm in, you know, necessarily sending the letter, but it seems like a little redundant. And one of the concerns, although I agree, and it's one of the comments I would have frequently made before various boards prior to becoming involved, was that, you know, those we have elected to represent us on the state level are not supporting the communities appropriately. So, the core of the letter, I could not agree with more. I think that this letter, I think, is clearly within the purview and focus of the school committee. My concern is, as a select board, I believe the letter's focus should have a broader scope, not limited to the concerns expressed by this, you know, the outside group, or essentially signing on to a letter that someone else wrote. And to be clear, I'm in agreement that the funding issue has to be addressed, and the letter simply targets a symptom of a larger problem. You know, essentially, the house is on fire, and this is addressing a room. You know, our letter should target the cause, the overall lack of appropriate funding that the state provides to not only Lunenburg, but all of the communities. And, you know, that was highlighted in that report, that was mentioned in a previous select board meeting of the Mass Municipal Association. So, I think, I think a letter from this board should encompass the struggles that our fire department is experiencing, the struggles that our stormwater task force is struggling with trying to address the stormwater issues. So, I think our letter, where we represent the town as a whole, should represent all issues and refer also to the other symptom of this problem, which is outlined very well in this letter. So, it's more, again, that letter is focused, I think, from the school committee or the school, and that's appropriate, and I'm supportive of that, but I would like to see our letter encompass more than just that.
I understand that. So, okay, a couple things to respond to here. I'll respond to that last point first by saying that we have actually sent a more generic local aide letter to our state delegation that I drafted. We can find that, and I can send it to you if you want. These letters do make a difference, and I know that now too, because at first, I kind of agreed with you. These letters give our state delegation more weight to their advocacy. So, they can say, look at all of these letters we have. We have hundreds of people that represent school committees, select boards, superintendents, town managers, signing on to this letter. That really makes it hard to ignore these asks. To address the point that our state delegation isn't really doing anything, or, you know, they're not, you know, advocating on these issues, Representative Scarsdale is leading these advocacy efforts. She's the one actually that reached out and requested that we sign on to this, so that she can have more people from her district that are signing on to it, and that she can advocate even more. So, you know, I don't think that's really true either. I think school funding does affect us, just like it affects the school committee. You know, I think the past couple of years now, a couple of months of our year have been taken up by the school budget. So, it absolutely affects the entire town, and I know that members of the school committee have signed on to the same letter, maybe they have as a committee, I don't know. But it doesn't mean that we can't as well, right? We can support them, and just like I'm assuming that they will support us when we ask for additional local aid in other areas that aren't related to schools. So, I hear you, I don't disagree with you. I think there's a lot of effort, I think there's a lot of ways that the state can support municipalities other than just school funding, but I do think this is a critical part, and, you know, I think we should do our part in signing on to this letter too.
Yeah, I'm certainly not arguing against sending the letter. I think that, to your point, there certainly is value, but it's just, I would like to see, you know, I would prefer that it had a more, from us, just augmented the focus that theirs has.
There's nothing stopping us from submitting another letter on other issues focused on different areas.
And that's what I would agree to. I think we should draft a secondary letter as well, but I would be in support of this letter as well. Before, at the beginning of this process, it was very focused on regional schools, and I'm glad that there now is regional and non-regional transportation support. I did see the rural schools. Lunenburg is not considered a rural school, rural town, in regards to funding, so that, I guess, is a little frustrating, but I think big picture, we got to make sure everybody's taken care of, so I would still support this letter, and I think it's important that we, again, continue the pressure on the legislators so that we can get something done.
And I will dig up that other letter that we sent. I don't remember when it was, but I can find it.
I just found it.
Did you?
Yeah, it's from March 18th. If you just search for.
I think just continuing it though, right? Like, we don't want to let them know once and then just let it go. So, I think March has been a while, it might be a good time to remind them of our concerns.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the updates, yeah.
Because the letters do matter.
I'm in the same viewpoint as Glenn, though, that it's definitely good for us to advocate for the town as a whole, but I don't think that those two things have to be separate. I think we can do both.
Right, for sure.
But this one, we have to vote on and do, or sign on tonight, because there's a deadline.
Approaching deadline in a couple of days, yeah. Okay, is there anything that we want to modify here in the letter?
There is that one word. Did you fix that, maybe? Hold on, I closed it to look for the other.
It does look like Amanda's name is spelled incorrectly here, so that's one thing that we'll have to address.
My name is spelled?
Yeah, on the bottom.
You have an extra.
It's solable.
It's a really hard name to spell.
Amanada.
Amanana.
I was going to say it, I didn't.
I'm just going.
Looks like we're just doing one last review here.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, Mr. McLeod.
So, I guess the only question, like, one of the bullet points that I simply don't know, the further mitigating the financial impact of charter schools on traditional public schools, like, I'm actually not sure.
So, the fact that basically, the more students that go to charter schools from Lunenburg, where Lunenburg is going to be missing out on funding, and there's a formula that provides some money back to Lunenburg, but the concern is that the more students that are going to charter schools, the more it affects the traditional public schools.
So, they're essentially saying that they should get more funding as a result of them leaving, becoming?
Adjusting that formula, yeah, that part of it.
I think it's, I think.
There is a financial impact.
Right, it's more adjust.
When the students go to charter schools.
I don't think it's adjusting so that we don't get negatively impacted as much from the students leaving, or de-incentivizing the students from going, right?
Okay. Any other changes anyone has? Okay, is there a motion for the select board to sign on to the letter as presented?
So moved. Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, so we'll have to print out another one with Amanda's name, and then we can sign it. All right, thank you, everyone. Old Business, discussion on special town meeting. So, we do have a draft of the motions. Town Council is still working on a couple, so MTA Communities is still being, having some minor tweaks to it. Town Council is attempting to shrink and simplify a few of them. Turns out, we don't need the warrant article for the PAC transfer, so that's going to be removed. It is still in here.
Yeah, it's going to go on May.
Yep, and I think that's most of it, but we can go through here, discuss the consent calendar. Another thing that we can also discuss as well is who's making the motions. So, right now, what we kind of do is just go down the line, so we can discuss if we want to continue doing that, or if we want to do something else as well. Okay, so we can start at the top. The consent calendar right now, not many, is flagged as Article 5, which I believe was the PAC transfer, which isn't actually going to be there anymore, right? Okay, it is that one. Okay, so it's just six and 14. So, six, I believe, is the cemetery commission transfer, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Yep, and then the other one is the second planning board article, the tuminous concrete one, since that was simple enough, it could have been included, so.
Yeah, so I typically, you know, something that has more than a majority quantum of vote, you want to consider whether or not you want to put that in the consent agenda, because it raises the quantum of vote for the entirety of the consent agenda for two-thirds. I think that we only have two things in this, so the risk is that people would vote down and then would just take up these articles individually. So, I think it makes sense, I think, to me, I don't think that the driveway issue is going to be so controversial that we won't have perhaps the two-thirds there, but if it is controversial, then we'll just take it up separately, each of those separately.
Yeah, I think it's fine as well. We did the same, I believe it was for our annual town meeting too, we had the same discussion about the voting threshold being increased, but I have no issue with it. We really don't even have much of a consent calendar at all, just these two articles. So, I mean, are there any articles that members think should be included in the consent calendar that aren't?
Bill from a prior fiscal year can sometimes be included, but I know sometimes residents just want to talk about those.
Right.
And that's a nine-tenths vote, too.
It is a nine-tenths vote.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't do that for that reason.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping that one out. So, I mean, I went through here, I didn't really see any that I felt really should be included here, so. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
I think the others are going to have some discussion.
Okay, so that's the consent calendar. There are a couple of motions that I know the town manager wanted to talk about, so the first was Article 2, right?
Right. So, I want to correct, I misspoke in my town manager's report, new growth is not $180,000, it's $118,000, so 118. So, some of that is going to be applied here. So, right now, we are looking at addressing some things in the FY26 budget. I'm working with the Finance Director now on nailing down the numbers, but I believe that we're going to be looking around $150,000 to address the impacts of the Finance Department transition. That's vacation buyouts, consultants, it's mostly consultants, frankly.
That's going to be in this article.
That's going to be in this article. The other things that we were looking at were, there's three pregnancies in the library that are going to need some coverage, so we were looking at possibly needing a transfer there. That's okay, I think that they don't need that transfer. The retiree health insurance came in higher, at about a little less than $100,000 higher. I believe that we're going to be able to absorb that with the excess positions that we have parked for contingency in the active. If we cannot, I would be proposing that we don't raise and appropriate, that we transfer, there is a small amount of money, about $140,000 left in the health insurance stabilization fund. I think that that would make sense to use for that purpose. So, I don't, I think, I think at this point, the only raise and appropriate that we will be doing is for the, to cover the Finance Department, okay? The, the other thing that we'll be doing is more, I believe, a nod to tradition than a legal necessity, is to vote the salary reserve transfer to fund the first year of the police contract at the town meeting. I think that that's been a discussion in the past of going to town meeting on that, and then we'll just do the other salary reserve transfers at town meeting, and just handle them there. So, that's about what I'm tracking right now, is I do think the $150,000. So, there, in that, 118 roughly is that new growth. Remains some additional state aid. Okay, so, this is where we are. There has been some folks that have suggested, why are you going to raise and appropriate these funds? Why not use the Finance Committee Reserve? In my opinion, it is far too early to be touching that Finance Committee Reserve. That is something that we'd want to be looking at in the, in the spring, really, for unanticipated items that may arise. That's usually where they arise. The other thing is, if you, if you use that excess new growth, then it affects free cash. Well, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. If we don't transfer it out of the Finance Committee Reserve, that money rolls to free cash, right? So, it's, it's all the same thing, really. I think that we need to, we need to keep, though, that Finance Can Reserve for unanticipated things that may arise, so.
Do you know the balance of that reserve?
We haven't made any appropriations out of it, so it's what we budgeted.
We used it some last year, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's an annual appropriation, yeah. So, whatever we used yet last year is reset.
Okay. Any other motions that you wanted to cover tonight that I didn't talk about?
I don't think so, but let me just take a peruse. Just that public access cable, it's not, it's not that we don't need it, we do need this vote, it's just timing, it needs to be at the May town meeting. The corrective vote on that. Nope, I don't, I don't think there's any other motions really to discuss, unless folks have questions.
Anyone have any questions on the motions?
I just wanted to bring up that last night at the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, they had mentioned that they are not going to be reporting.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Pass over that.
Sure.
One report of the three.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think the last thing that we need to talk about is whether or not we still want to have a meeting the Monday before town meeting, like we had discussed before. We still have, I think, four articles that we need to make recommendations on. Do we still want to have a meeting before, in order to get through those last recommendations, before town meeting?
It would make town meeting a little bit shorter.
It does, yeah, it does make a difference.
We can't do it just during the meeting, make the recommendations?
We can, we can make the recommendations on the floor, it's just one extra thing to do at town meeting.
Right.
So it's a little easier to do it before, which is kind of what we've-
We've also done it right before.
We have.
Like, call the meeting like a half hour before town meeting starts.
Yeah, and that's what we normally have done, and what, I'm okay with doing that as well.
Either way, it's fine with me.
Yeah.
If, if I could suggest a personal preference-
Sure.
I would prefer that we schedule a meeting for both the half hour before and the Monday night. If it looks like there's not a lot to talk about, we'll go ahead and cancel the Monday.
Okay.
If it looks like it's something that we can just do quickly in five, 10 minutes before. If it's looking, as things develop, I can't promise that I'm not going to have more that you all would want to maybe talk through a little bit longer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it hurts to at least block out some time on that Monday in case we need it. I'm not anticipating that we will. We don't have too many articles, and if we want to, we can always just cancel it and just do it-
Right.
-at like six or 6:30, right before town meeting.
Are we able to vote on any tonight? I'm looking at the two from the Planning Board, they have their hearing.
Yep, they did have their hearing, I was going to ask about that, but, you know, we have that meeting anyway, so I just didn't. Did we, did we watch the public hearing?
I watched it. Wait, I watched most of it.
Let me ask this way, is anyone not prepared to vote to make a recommendation on the two Planning Board articles?
Yeah, I did watch it.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
All right, it sounds like we're ready. Okay, so let me find which ones.
Are you ready?
Yes, it was thirteen and fourteen.
Yep, okay, so I will move to recommend approval on Article 13, MBTA Zoning Act Compliance.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes four to one, and I will move to recommend approval on Article 14, Batuminous Concrete Common Driveways.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay.
So how many are left?
So I believe there's two, there's two or three, so let's start at the top. So the first one, recommend approval, we have the two here, right, so payment of prior year bills, so we probably want to hold off on that, and then Article 2 as well, budget adjustments, want to hold off on that, too, and I think that's it, I think it's just those two.
So this sheet, because this says deferred for Article 3?
Yeah, it should be just 3 and 4, or 2 and 3.
2 and 3.
Yep.
Is that it? Finance Committee has a bunch, they haven't done anything.
They haven't done any.
They will be making all of their recommendations-
Thirteenth?
-after their, what, they will be starting to make their recommendations at their public hearing on the evening of the thirteenth. They, I don't know if they're going to have another meeting in advance, so, to that point, the, if the public's not aware, there is a public hearing on Thursday, November 13th, with the Finance Committee, where they will be holding a public hearing on the warrant.
Okay, so it's just Article 2 and Article 3 left now. So we can hold that off for Monday or Tuesday. Is there a time on that Monday that we want to tentatively schedule a meeting for? I know I asked this before, I don't remember what the folks said. Six or seven?
Are we doing this remote?
We can.
Yeah, six is fine with me.
Six is fine, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
And if we don't need it, then we won't have it, and then we'll just meet probably 6:30 before town meeting.
So, just a few other town meeting updates, the mailers hit the post office yesterday, so if they didn't hit your mailbox today, I would expect that they would hit your mailbox tomorrow. Those have been posted online. The documents that are on file with the town clerk have also been posted online, those longer documents for folks to read through in advance. As I complete the additional handouts, I'll share them with this board for your feedback. They don't need to be voted, but I'll share them for any feedback, and then I'll post them online.
Great. All right, anything else we want to talk about for town meeting? All right. Moving on, discussion on tri-board meetings, so I think the only thing is figuring out when we're going to do the next one. So the next is going to be schools, superintendent is prepared to give her presentation the week of Thanksgiving, so I don't know if folks would be available to meet on that Monday, I believe that's the 24th, the day before we have our tax classification hearing. Is that something that we would be able to do, that Monday?
I can do it.
Yeah.
Just checking.
What, what time?
I'm assuming we would start, we've been starting at seven for those, right?
Have we started at six?
Have we?
Have we started at six?
We've been doing-
Pretty sure it's seven, yeah, seven.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
Oh, right, because hard stop at 10:00 PM, right.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, I could, yeah.
Mr. McLeod?
I should be able to do that.
All right, great, it looks like we're all available to do that. Okay, so, we'll see if everyone else is able to meet that night, and then we'll go from there. Anything else on the tri-board? Okay. Minutes?
No, I guess, I just will, I do want to address, I guess, publicly, I think I've had some private conversations here, but as, kind of harkening back to the topic in my town manager's report, I am committed to continuing at this point with this tri-board process. However, as things develop, I just am flagging that that would be something that may be affected.
For sure. Okay. Don't believe we have any minutes?
Uh-uh.
I don't think we have warrants either.
Uh-uh.
Action items?
The heat in this room is working.
It is, actually, it's, yeah, it's nice in here.
I'm not complaining.
I'm hot. I'm not wearing my coat yet, so.
Yeah. That room's really warm. Did we want to try to share a little bit on reviewing minute, drafts of minutes, to catch up?
Yes, so we do have some minutes that just need a second glance over, if anyone is able to watch some meetings and just review minutes, is anyone able to do that?
These are minutes that were prepared by third-party contractors that don't necessarily know Lunenburg, right, so they don't know all of our folks and their names, but, so they need, I've had them for a while, and the backlog is here for the review, so.
How many sets are there?
Yeah, outstanding to be reviewed, probably about 10.
Okay.
If we did two each?
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's a way that-
That was quick.
-we can at least make them available, and then as we have time, we can just do them.
Maybe people could pick them off?
Yeah.
Volunteer, put your name, I can drop them, minutes to be reviewed, and you can put your name next to them-
Yeah.
-and you're taking them, and that would be your ownership.
Right, that's a good way to do it. Okay, great.
Because we're way behind.
Yeah.
We are, not as behind as we were like a year ago.
Shipping away.
But-
But we're going to fall again.
Yeah.
Further behind.
Okay.
You're going to put those in the drive, we're going to put our name on them.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Committee reports?
I need a minute. I can give a quick one. Stormwater task force met, I think since we last met? Anyway, we voted 4-0 to approve the proposal that we received from, what's her name, Weston Simpson?
Yes.
I don't know if you needed a vote, but we voted as a task force to approve the-
Excellent.
-their proposal. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
Planning Board, they have a change of policy with the public comment change, they'll have no public comment at the onset of the meeting, they'll have it before each agenda item to ensure that the topics are covered. The open space is, it's basically both between the Planning Board as well as open space, they're just at the discussion level of them becoming a, the open space becoming a free-standing committee versus an ad hoc, so again, they're just starting that conversation. They had an ANR approval not required at 9:30 Mass Ave, that's an area behind the Historical Society, to expand the substation. They did endorse the ANR. They had public hearings on 255 Sunny Hill Road for stormwater permit. There was, revealed that there were some taxes due on the property, so that was continued. MBTA Communities Act, of course, they did have their public hearing, and they did recommend the article be adopted. The driveway, which they also recommended, the driveway article, which they also recommended be adopted. In board discussions, they adopted Mass General Law 110, Chapter 110G, and that's related to the electronic document signing. The Master Plan Steering Committee had their last public information gathering session on October 22nd at Coffee Roses, which we've just discussed, for open space, again, there's, had just routine business, and we're talking about that, the topic of becoming a free-standing committee. Their next meeting is November 12th, and no other updates.
The school committee met on October 15th, they talked about the school improvement plans, they also went over the assessment report, student data, they talked about their budget goals, also their goals for Turkey Hill renovation or new build, and developing a clear budget process to avoid chaos. They are meeting tomorrow, some of the items, they are doing a first read on policies on advertising in the schools, cash handling, middle school pathways, and competency determinations. They're also going to be going over the superintendent drafted goals, too, tomorrow, and the school committee goals. The Board of Assessors met on November 3rd, they received nine abater lists, processed 51 motor vehicle excise tax abatements, waiting payment by the tax collector, they approved 96 exemptions. They were transitioning data from Vision to Munist to reduce duplications. They had sales and assessments, the median assessment to sales ratio is at 95%, which meets the Department of Revenue's requirements between 90 and 110%. The, they did vote to approve the LA4 document and the LA13 document, and their upcoming meeting, they have a classification hearing scheduled for November 25th, Select Board, they did talk about sharing with the Select Board, the new and veteran members, the individual increases for individual properties that stood out, and then their next meeting is scheduled for December 3rd. Then the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee met on Monday, we had discussed the tours the week before about the Ritter and the Town Hall, we talked about the Ritter improvements through the painting, and we talked about the challenges using the Ritter because of the ground entrances of the original building, the challenges there, and for making it accessible, and talked about the elevator. There was also a lot of concerns about the Brooks House, and also 925 Mass Ave, and we talked about how there'd be, we were not ready for a presentation at the fall town meeting.
Great, all right, thank you. Capital Planning is meeting tomorrow night for Fire and DPW, and then Biolo Review Committee is meeting Thursday night, and that's all I have tonight. All right, upcoming meetings, our next meeting is going to be, well, we don't have any regularly scheduled meetings until after special town meeting, so the next meeting is going to be special town meeting, November 18th, 2025. If we have that Monday meeting, then we'll meet the day before, if not, we'll be meeting right before special town meeting. Public comment, is there any public comment from the public this evening? Not seeing any in the room, is there any on Zoom?
Oh, can I make a comment?
Hi.
Mike Clark?
Yep, so just start with your name and address, and then you'll get three minutes to make a public comment.
Okay, Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road, Lunenburg. In, on the subject of signing on to a letter from the Mass Teachers Association, I'm not sure I got the whole thing. I'm also the Chair of the Lunenburg Republican Town Committee. I view the Mass Teachers Association as a partisan organization primarily. They organize, they participate in campaigns, and donate primarily to Democrats. So I don't see why, as a bipartisan board, and with a town of Democrats, independents, and Republicans, we would sign on to a letter written by an organization, which is basically a union organization, to represent the teachers' unions in public schools that have unions. The other thing that I found particularly disturbing of this organization is with the public assassination of Charlie Kirk at a public university in front of schoolchildren, people, women had brought their children to watch him talk. There was such a plethora of teachers in Massachusetts and throughout the country who kind of mocked this, sent out memes, or other, other things they shared on their Facebook pages, you know, like, you know, they tell their students, you have freedom of speech, but what you say matters, and then there's consequences for what you say. And we saw a number of teachers in Massachusetts being dismissed for this, and the Mass Teachers Association came out and said, well, they do have free speech. So, here you have, you know, you have this organization full of, you know, members that lean left, and tell you you're going to be accountable for your free speech up and to, including being assassinated, and yet at the same time, they should be able to post what they want on Facebook. So I think, and they're attending these No Kings rallies, which is just organized by, I think it's called Independent Access or something America, which is a left-wing super PAC. So, I really don't think we should be doing anything with the Mass Teachers Association at this point, because I think what we've seen is a lot of deplorable behavior out of the members of that group. So I would like to just leave my comment on that and request that we don't align with these partisan political groups. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark, for your public comment, have a good night. Any public comment from the town manager this evening?
Yes, I do have a public comment, thank you. So, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that we heard earlier tonight, as we enter into this season of giving. I just pulled up some data on the website of, from Mass GIS, about the number of SNAP clients by municipality in Massachusetts. As of September of 2025, the town of Lunenburg has 995 SNAP clients. Wherever you are on this issue, the reality is, is that people are not having benefits come to them as of November 1st, and that will have a very real impact on families. So if you are able, I just want to reiterate some of the messaging from earlier, if they're, if you don't support a particular organization, that's fine, and if you are able to find an organization that you support, particularly as we hit these cold months, particularly as we enter this season of giving, I think that wrapping around each other as community and coming together as community is all the more important.
Thank you for that. So I see it's around 8% of the entire municipality, so it really is a high number, especially when you also take into consideration that that's not taking into fact the number of households, it's the total residents.
By substance.
That number is really much higher, so thank you. Any public comment from the board? All right. I will move to enter into executive session and not re-enter open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union- with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is for the Director of Municipal Finance/Town Accountant.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote, Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Aye.
Ms. Emke?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, we are now in executive session. Have a good night, everyone.